I'm calling the meeting in order, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
Penney?
Here.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Here.
Councilmember Shemolo Burke, and I'll be attending this evening, and Mayor Melman.
Here.
Sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Urban Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in Thursday, July 7th editions of the Belville Times and Star Ledger. A copy of manual meeting notice has been posted on the Belville Town and Bolton Board, and copies on our file in municipal clerk's boxes.
But you lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the free republic of the United Nations, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is presentations. First, we have the 40th anniversary of Michael's Ross Common House. So I'm going to invite Frank and his wife to come forward. I'm going to come down and read the proclamation. So before we present the proclamation, you might notice that most of us are wearing pink today. That's in honor of breast cancer awareness. Most of us, or a few of us, I should say, had the opportunity to participate in the 5K. Penny, you came in second.
I came in second, but I led a parade in front of the mayor, so.
So Frank, in honor of his wife, has been doing this for years, and you're going to hear a little bit of that when I read the proclamation. But every single October, I know Deputy Mayor Graziano had the idea that we would represent and always wear pink at least one meeting in October. And not only did we do the 5K this past weekend, but on Thursday, myself, Deputy Mayor Graziano, Councilman Cosarelli bartended. That was the least money probably, the tips that were donated, but Frank very graciously takes 20% of all bills and donates that back to his foundation, which then contributes to breast cancer awareness. So thank you for all you guys do. Many thanks. Without further ado, whereas, resolved by the Municipal Council and Township of Belville, whereas Michael's Ross Common House will celebrate on November 10th, 2022, their 40th anniversary. And whereas Michael's Ross Common House opened in 1982 by Michael and Pamela Dauxus? Got it. Dauxus, I've been practicing all day. Whereas Michael's Ross Common House was a huge success and is now owned by their son Frank, who continues with their motto, "Where you're only a stranger once." And whereas Frank, who is dedicated to the township of Belville, has over the past few years raised and distributed over $250,000, which directly went to breast cancer survivor families and scholarships for our community and to spread awareness and acceptance for autism. And whereas Michael's Ross Common House is known for its burgers, Jersey wings, and has also been proudly serving the Belville community for four decades. Whereas the mayor and municipal council, the township of Belville hereby support the efforts of local businesses and recognize this critical role each one plays in our community. And now therefore being resolved, the mayor and municipal council and township of Belville congratulate Michael's Ross Common on their 40th anniversary and wish them continued success now and to the future. Thank you so much.
No speech, Frank?
No. Thank you so much. Oh, this is yours.
I tried to steal your proclamation.
Thank you for being here, Frank. I will say that former Mayor Esq. does a salad named after him. Just putting that out there. Just put it out there.
Former.
Former.
Former. Okay, next on the agenda, I know Councilman Cosarelli had a proclamation to honor some firefighters. Who's going to call them up? I see firemen are here today, which is great. I see the chiefs here, deputy chiefs here. How about we call up the two recipients, Mr. Timothy Roberts and Anthony Campezi, to be joined by Councilman Cosarelli down at the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to read it here so you can hear me a little better. This is a little lengthy proclamation here, but I think it's worth it. I think everyone should hear this story of what these great firemen did recently. And then after I'm done reading this, I'm going to ask the chief basically to paraphrase it and let everyone know what really happened. Yeah. Whereas, on October 8th, 2022, firefighters Timothy Roberts and Anthony Campezi responded to an EMS call for an abnormal heart rate at 33 Washington Avenue. On the way to the hospital, the patient revealed that he had an LVAD, which is a left ventricle assist device, causing, which, a device which was causing an abnormal heart rate. The device helps pump blood from the lower chambers of your heart to the rest of your body. At this point, the firefighters realized the seriousness of the call. The emergency room attended to the patient right away with some sense of panic. Realizing this, firefighters Roberts and Campezi decided to stay in the emergency room to see what was the confusion. The problem was the device was running out of power, and the hospital did not have the necessary rear equipment to charge or replace the battery needed to save the patient's life. The patient is on a heart transplant list, and the only thing keeping him alive was this device. There are only three hospitals in the area that could provide the life-saving intervention he needed: Morristown, Hackensack, and North Beth Israel. Firefighters Roberts and Campezi obtained permission for the transport of the patient to North Beth Israel Hospital. While arrangements were being made for the transport, the patient's alarm on his device sounded that there was only 15 minutes left on the battery. The patient was transferred to the back of EMS, and along with the medical unit, they began the life-saving transport. The firefighters checked their GPS unit, which stated it would take 21 minutes to arrive at North Beth Israel. If they did not make it to the hospital within 15 minutes, the device would shut off and the patient would instantly pass. Firefighters Roberts and Campezi experienced the most tense transport of their careers. North Beth Israel Hospital anticipated the arrival and was waiting outside. They arrived with 34 seconds left to spare and were able to charge this young man's life-saving equipment. The ironic part of the call was the medics were canceled on the original call due to the proximity of the hospital and the distance of the medics. If the medics had been on scene, the routine procedure would have been to take the patient to where the device was installed, Mount Sinai in Manhattan. That would have resulted in the definite expiration of the battery and cardiac arrest en route. Without the urgency felt by firefighters Roberts and Campezi, the patient would not have been able to survive. Where now, therefore being resolved by the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belville, we hereby recognize and thank firefighters Timothy Roberts and Anthony Campezi for their compassion, strong dedication to their profession as firefighters, and wish them much success in their careers with the Belville Fire Department.
We're going to allow the chief a few minutes just to once again paraphrase, but on behalf of the entire council, I just want to congratulate these fine men for the job they did. Tommy, Deputy Mayor?
No, you said it all, Mayor. God bless you. Thank you for everything, all of you. Thank you.
Councilman Nattari?
You guys are really true heroes. That's all I have to say. True heroes. Thank you.
Yes, one thing is to do your job, and another one is to go above and beyond. And this is a true example of that. We are so proud and honored to have you as part of our team here in Belville, and I'm just in awe. I think there's a movie in the making here. It truly sent me. Thank you. Congratulations. You guys are amazing.
Great drive. Thank you. You're a lovely friend. And Arianna, I apologize. Okay?
Thank you so much, gentlemen. Thank you for all you do.
I think Councilman Cosarelli gave a great description of what happened. I got a call the next day from Battalion Chief Sam and explained it to me what had happened, and I read it to Councilman Cosarelli and explained to him, and he thought it would be a good idea to give a proclamation to the guys tonight, and I thought it was a great idea also. What you don't realize is usually when you're at the hospital. So we transfer care of the patient, get our sheet signed, clean up, you know, repack the ambulance, and get back into service. But what these two, what these two fellows realized is that something wasn't right. And they saw these scurrying in the ER, and they realized that they may need, they may be needed. So they stuck around, and, you know, just from their experience, they knew that they were going to be needed, and it turned out that without their transfer, this patient, who was only 27 years old, would have expired. So, and between them, I think there's about five, five years of experience only. So they did an unbelievable job. You know, they've been on the ambulance, they have some experience, but just recognizing that, I just want to say that was a tremendous job, guys. Thank you. One other quick thing, we have another EMT tomorrow, James Judge. I don't know if everybody else, he's getting an award at the St. Barnabas Burn Center Foundation of Valor Award. He had another call that was a very serious life-threatening call where someone was working with a tree, so it fell and, I hate to say this, cut his neck. And so firefighter Judge was able to use a cervical collar and some packing and hold that in place to secure the airway and keep the person alive until he got to the hospital for some additional help. So we have another fireman EMT getting an award tomorrow. But I'm real proud of you guys. Great job.
We're going to give it just about two minutes or so, so if the honorees, anybody that received an award or anybody here, because they received an award, wants to exit the meeting, you can. So we're just going to give it a break for about two minutes, everybody. Okay, so we are resuming our meeting, so the next, the next item is really reported to the manager, and Mr. Manager, who is yours?
Good evening, everyone. First, to start off with my report, our last meeting, we had a concern that was brought to the mayor and council, a very large limb tree over Belville Avenue by the Gulf Coast. I'm happy to report that we receive work in the county, and that's scheduled to be taken care of tomorrow, weather permitting. So that's, it's great. Concerns can be brought to us, and again, obviously, it was addressed quickly, efficiently, and effectively. My report to the mayor and council, we started the 2023 budget process. Our CFO, Frankie Gregory, who's with us tonight, has assured me that we will, similar to last year, be on time and be in place for the process. The, you know, usually starts somewhere around November 1st, so we're actually even a little earlier, which is great. Also, I do want to acknowledge Frank's work. We just closed the closing documents to receive our $2 million towards the Green Acres Grant at the stadium. So that, it took a, you know, it's a very tedious application, so that was complete now. So again, thank you, Frank, for that. 17 streets are going to be paved probably within the next 30 to 45 days. The schedule's about a week away. As soon as we get that schedule, communication is key, so we'll try to blast that out and get the schedule of streets out as soon as we know what the schedule is. But that's 17 streets in a 30 to 45-day period. There's going to be a lot of activity on the streets, but obviously, the improvement in the infrastructure is greatly needed and something that we're very happy about. And last, I want to just bring up the council up to speed. I did get to speak to some, but not everyone. We're trying a pilot chat service program with the Board of Education, specifically as it comes to two winter sports. The two winter sports, just so you know, 95% of the facility use is on the Board of Education property to begin with. So it's a very, should be a very smooth transition to take the facilities, which, by the way, has a brand-new, state-of-the-art indoor facility on Courtland, which I think the grand opening is on Saturday. And again, so it's just the timing of the winter sports, this new indoor facility coming on, coming on, it all just, it made sense to try this. It's a pilot program, okay? So if we get great success out of it, and when I say great success, what is great success? Great success is what's best for the children, what, the outcome of what our children and students will receive by using these facilities, getting hands-on coaching from, I wouldn't say professional coaches, but certainly when the high school coaches get involved with some of these programs, it's just going to make our feeder program that much stronger. There will always be room for volunteers, so we, coaches and we'll definitely be looking for volunteers to supplement the program. So this is just a new opportunity, putting our children first. And again, at the end of the winter, going into the spring, we'll sit back in routine. If there's any questions, sir.
Questions for the manager? Deputy Mayor? Anybody?
I just had a quick question. You and I talked a little bit. Let me turn on my light. You and I talked a little bit about this, the criteria for the DOE is a little bit different than the criteria for department personnel. The effect is, like, I know in high school, it's very different. You have to have the 60 credit check in order to do the coaching. Is that pertinent down below?
No, so there's no.
There's no criteria?
There's no criteria. You don't, to be a volunteer, and that's exactly what we're looking.
Okay, so we don't pay?
So, the, the, the coaches are volunteers.
Okay.
Right? And those, and we hope, you know, we look forward to current participation. Again, we could have as many as 40 basketball teams. I mean, again, we don't know yet, we just started the enrollment. Wrestling seems like a no-brainer at all because there's too.
Because the facility's there.
The facility's there, so we'll look at, you know, look in both as some really positive outcomes, especially wrestling and basketball.
Let's, I mean, you kind of touched on it about the facilities. I mean, we have maybe one basketball court at the friendly house. It's not a legit basketball court, it's not sized correctly on the right floor. Every single facility that we use for these two sports, for the most part, is intertwined with the school system. It's their gymnasiums, it's their facilities, it's, it's. It's their equipment. Yep. Okay. No other questions for the manager? Moving on. Next item on the agenda is a report of the mayor, so I always start with past events. The Belville Police did their community safety talk on October 13th at Houston Church, not to be outdone. The firemen had their safety event on the 14th, where the kids get to squirt a hose and play with all kinds of stuff. It's always a big, always a big draw for our community. And this past Saturday was a busy day in Belville, as you heard me say before. We started the day at Michael's Ross Common House, where his foundation once again raised money during their 5K run. From there, we went over to the high school for the Halloween Spectacular, which was another great event hosted by the township. And from there, the Better Belville Civic Association hosted the police versus firemen in their second annual charity softball game. And this year, the police took the trophy. Where, do you have the trophy, chief?
It's outside my office.
It's physically present here, and next year is the rubber match, so we're looking forward to year three. Upcoming events, this Friday, we have yet another park opening in Belville, the AARP Park, which is basically on Division Avenue, going up against Princeton Terrace. We'll be there at noon for a quick unveiling. We have representatives of the local AARP club there, and I think a national rep will be there as well. Also, this Friday, Belville Police Department, not to be outdone by the township's event, is doing their own Spooktacular. Did you call it that, chief?
I would like to take credit, but I don't mind my sergeant.
Spooktacular, so in case, I see what the police are doing. In case you missed the township's event on Saturday, they just want to offer you the ability to have a second bite of the apple. It'll be right here in the parking lot. They also did another event here recently in the parking lot, ice cream or pizza?
We did ice cream.
Ice cream with a cop. So right here in the parking lot of Town Hall, from 6:00 to 8:00, Belville PD's Spooktacular, just in case you missed Saturday's event.
The original Ghostbusters car will be there.
So you didn't, however, if you realize this, but we actually had two Ghostbusters living in Rutgers Arms a couple of years ago. They would get called out to paranormal activity, they had, and our parades, when the car was in there, was actually them. They lived right here in Belville. They don't live here anymore. So basically, the chief has an in. He gets better equipment than we get, you're telling me, for our event. Nice. Maybe next year, we can work together on that. A shared service, Mr. Icon. Tuesday, November 8th is Election Day, Town Hall will be closed. Sunday, November 13th is our 5K race at 9 o'clock, and our veterans parade at noon. We had a good meeting today with our local vets. Everything seems to be coming along nicely. I believe registrations are ticking up, prior to last year's 5K registrations, which is good. News, obviously, you heard me say before, we're all wearing pink for breast cancer awareness, with the exception of the chief. Afterwards, we're going to take a picture and make sure it gets out there. There is a rumor circulating that there might be an announcement coming soon of a major, major event for the first game of the World Cup. Any soccer fans out there, you know the World Cup is every four years. It's traditionally being done in the summertime. This year, it's in Qatar, which is the Middle East, it's being done in December, and actually starts in November. So stay tuned to social media, there may be a major announcement for an event for the first game of the World Cup, which would be November 20th. Stay tuned for that. Township Council had our first ABC board meeting in 17 years. If you tuned in at 5 o'clock, you heard that. Anchor program, I'm told most people have no idea the anchor program is out there, what it is. It's basically a check. Replace the old homestead rebate, you'll get either a $2,500 check, a $1,500 check, or a $450 check if you're a renter, all based on your residency in 2019. It's legit. I had my questions about it, my reservations about it. It is legit. We'll be visiting our senior buildings and educating our seniors about that. I've reached out to the Belville Public Library to get them to assist with registration if you don't have your, your code. But it's a real program. Halloween decorating contest, the deadline is this coming Friday. We have some serious competition this year. Hydrant flushing, the 24th through the 27th. I'll be starting in the next couple of days or so, a turkey giveaway program through my civic, reminding all people, all residents, to make sure you subscribe to Nixle Reverse 911 Service, we have a brand-new Nixle Reverse 911 Service. According to the manager, the pickleball court, which I went and toured the other day, is getting close. The fence posts are up, it looks like the flooring is in. We're anxiously awaiting that. I had to go to North Arlington on Sunday to play my niece. Couldn't get on the court because it was packed, had to drive to Nutley. I'm tired of going to North Arlington. I'm tired of going to Nutley. Belville's going to have her own facilities, pickleball. I'm tired of going to Nutley to run the track. Soon, I'll be running the track in Belville. Belville's definitely doing a great job with our facilities, looking forward to that. That's going to be huge, by the way. It's going to be huge. I've already made contact with a professional who will be offering clinics to our seniors or active adults who want to take a clinic for that. Lastly, great program going on the Belville Public Library. Check out their website for additional information. That's it. Approval of minutes.
Command conference of regular meeting on February 8th, 2022.
Now, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We'll take, we have a motion and a second. Clerk color roll?
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Penney?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Communications?
A request received from the residents of Sycamore Drive for permission to conduct a block party on Sunday, October 30th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
That goes over to the police department, correct? We take no action on that. Next item on the agenda is ordinances. Seeing none for first reading, seeing none for second reading. Ordinances on the table. Hearing no motion to remove the ordinance on the table, I will get, entertain a motion for public comment. So moved. We have a motion made in second to open public commenting. Clerk color roll?
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Penney?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
That's a yes for me. Okay, public comments. Hearing none. Oh, forgot. Can you just adjust that mic?
Yes.
I'm just getting my stop-up working here. Yeah, give us a week of time.
Just start here.
We could time ourselves.
I just start. Go.
Here we go.
Five seconds in.
Just want to bring this subject up. I know, I know it's a pain, but I bring it up every year because it's very depressing. I've been, a Starlet Journal article about Jersey City again. Unfortunately, their short, their budget, school budget again, well, they're criticizing the schools that there's another $1,600 a year tax increase. That was on top of $993 from the year before, and I think it was $1,000 a year before. So we're looking like Jersey City, because of all the developments, the only reason I'm bringing this up is because 2018, 2019, we were talking about how great pilot programs are and how Jersey City accelerated with the development. They sure did. They're the highest taxes in the, not taxes, highest rentals in the country. But the point on, what reason I keep bringing this up is because pilots do not pay into the educational system, and I just fear what's going to happen in a few, maybe five years from now. I don't want to be in a position with the Board of Education, which is happening in Jersey City right now. That is the reason I keep bringing it up. It says here, the big question is, over the past few years, Jersey City residents put thousands more into the schools by raising tax, and they're also raising tax. I already mentioned that, so I'm not going to be. And they, then they're complaining that the council is criticizing the Board of Education for the, for the tax increases, saying that the bolder salaries in their central office, and they have not looked at any common sense to correct the issues. And the other thing is, let me pull the Starlet Journal out. I just want to read something from the Starlet Journal. Yeah. The one-two punch comes courtesy of an average of $1,200 tax increase from the Board of Education. And now, also, three, three portions of their tax bills coming out between the municipal council, Board of Ed, and county. Each homeowner's facing $2,300 tax increase. I mean, that's on top of the previous year. One year, they used their rub, money from the COVID, $69 million, to help the Board of Education. And it says here, if you'll read the one there sentence. We have to seriously look at a hiring freeze. Part of my huge problem is its budget. They cut the budget, but they give out merit pay, merit raises. So that is the reason I'm always objective to it, the pilot program, because they do not pay into the school systems. And, all right, I just want to bring up something on the planning board meeting when we were talking about the parking, and what I, what I, I recorded that section, and what I noticed is no fourth of use button. The problem is, the way I see what happened and the questions that I posed was the developers, I feel, are taking really advantage of us because of our lax ordinances, where we only allow them one parking spot. And if you recall, at the Union Avenue property, they said, well, we don't have to provide for visitor parking anything. So I would hope that we would look, you, not me, would look at probably increasing the amount of parking these developers need instead of one car, because, and, and they did acknowledge on tape, which I've heard, read before I came here, and they said, we're just complying with the law. When I asked about the parking study, we're complying with the law, that's the answer. So really, I see them kind of tying your hands, and you have to be at their mercy. I think it should be the opposite way. And I mentioned about the, oh yeah. Any other thing? I'm going to go back to Union Avenue for one second. I just looked at the districts that surround that, and I said, there's a lot of, no parking can affect, affect the quality of life. When I looked at the Ward 2 district, 1 district, 2, 4, 5, and 4, 6, you have 3,491 voters in that area there. So, so for them to say that it's not going to affect the quality of life, only time will tell. And I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. But anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing.
Do you need to start wrapping up?
Yeah. I'm going to wrap it up right now. Yeah. The one last paper I had here, if you could just look at the builders and give me an answer. Something that caught my eye on the builders, on page 19, and I, and I noticed that, you know, the builders, you're charged just for a hotel room, is that going to lead to municipalities?
Yeah.
That didn't occur yet, and you're paying them in drams? That didn't occur yet, and you're paying them in drams?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary, you're out of time now. We answered the question, Mary.
All right, just one thing, just answer this for me, Mr. Manager. Is one here with the same P.O. number for three rooms, what is that? Yeah, you want to look at it?
For three different people, probably.
Three different people.
It's different purchase, it's not just one purchase order for an umbrella. It's different purchase orders for different. Anybody else in public commenting? Just to bring this on. Exceed his own time.
I was close.
Mayor, you mentioned something about the basketballs, the Board of Ed, the equipment and all that. The, you know, you do a lot of these food truck things, all these feel-good things. You have done nothing in four or five years at all. Couple of months ago, I gave Mr. Graziano pictures. I was only in Oakston three years. But the whole recreation department was all new. The rec building, where you now have a latrine. I showed Mr., two complete, brand-new basketball courts. Regulations I've ever built. I had a basketball court down on Cortlandt Street. Basketball courts on School Number Nine. Everything in A1 condition we had. We had all kinds of facilities toward Recreation Department under my administration. You've done nothing.
That's not true. The basketball courts at Fairway Park are brand-new, and there's $2.1 million coming down Number Nine School, which include not one, but two sets of basketball courts. That's not true.
Comes down after five years. You couldn't put them up, I mean, there was nothing. I had town employees install these things at very low cost, just for the cost of the poles and the baskets. So you'd have 2.9 million of all that, wherever it comes from.
Clearly, it didn't last, did it?
You know why it didn't last? As soon as I got out of office, they took them down because a parent activist connected with the council at that time says, oh, those basketball courts are bringing in people from Newark, all right? Nothing wrong with them, I have all the pictures. Of every recreation site in perfect condition renovated. So what happened, that dirty politics, you know, and our kids suffered for it. And then they spent $150,000, I think these four guys were there, to put that latrine in the rec house, which has never opened, right? Never opened, you have games there, parents go there. We go to other towns, I got six grandchildren in other towns. Every facility is open. We were just in Little Falls last Thursday. You gotta go to the bathroom, it's open, not in Bellevle, you know. So let's do that. And then, funny thing, I'm in line at Home Depot a couple of days ago. Then a couple of guys in front, they're talking nice and loud. Oh yeah, we're doing a Bellevle, oh yeah. And he kept saying he, I don't know who he was, you told me. Oh yeah, he's building all of the Bellevle, um, Washington Avenue, he's got that. And he's also going to get the recreation building on Garden Avenue. He's going to build on there. And I'm saying, oh my God, this guy, you know. But it's true, because remember, a guy came right here, and he wanted the recreation site of 75 or 80 units? So there, is this still going on?
That didn't happen.
Well, I'm just bringing it up, so it better not happen. But the word is out there, I'm standing in line to check out a Home Depot, and ironically, that info comes to me, and then it goes, a guy stood right here and said he wanted that site. It better not happen. And one other thing, you mentioned shared services tonight, I don't know what regards. There's alleged scandal in the making with the King Alunum site. The purpose, if you look at the legislation, and I was at an assembly hearing years ago when they passed the shared service agreement. The intent was to save and reduce taxpayer money. Now, you've got all kinds of towns, I think Glen Rock and Hawthorne, they combined their fire departments, all right? And they saved money, less dollars spent. Montclair took over the Glen Ridge Fire Department. Glen Ridge saved three-quarters to a million dollars, eliminating their fire department. Montclair benefited by saving money on their thing. Not in Bellevle. Your phony shared services with the King Alunum project, it's a scam. You're going to spend tens of millions of dollars just to go there, the construction off. So I'm warning you council people, that better not take place. It is illegal, it is not a shared service agreement intended with the purpose to save tax dollars. This is going to cost us tens of millions to acquire it, to build it, and maintain it. It's nothing but a scam. So I hope some of you council people will wake up, yeah. And the final thing in the paper today, The Observer, is that your NJ.com read, did their, you accused them of threatening with a lawsuit and all that.
They didn't redo it, they retracted the story and changed the headline. They shouldn't have written that.
They did not retract the story, they retracted certain words. But the question I have, the last question, you have an attorney, Marlo Hitman. Who's paying for these attorneys? Who's paying Ms. Hitman?
I can pay my own attorneys.
Personally, not out of taxpayer's money?
No, Mr. Frank, don't worry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Sheldon? I think that was probably longer than five minutes, actually, right? Because at 4:30, I passed them to wrap up.
Longer, you mean.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Want to thank you again for making the bills list available at long last. I did have a question about a set of expenses appearing on this particular bills list. There are a lot of horticulture, there are a lot of plants that have been purchased, including two cherry trees for $1,600, a maple tree for nearly $300, et cetera, totaling almost $7,000. Where might I find these trees? Can you please tell me where these plants have been placed?
Mr. Icono? Uh, you know what, let's just, do you have any more questions?
Yes, I do, I do the answer later, later on. I've been asking for the longest time with your iCompass Civic Web System. Still, at this date, the July 1st and the July 12th agendas and the agenda packets are missing. I don't know why it's taking so long. But just for the sake of completeness, because some of us do use the system to do research, could you please get the July 1st, the rework, and the July 12th council meeting agenda packets on iCompass?
Now, there's another task from Mr. Icono.
And bills list, I have, there are a number of legal expenses. I know you can't go into the details in all likelihood, but I just would like to have some global explanation for what these firms are doing. Post-Pollock are paid almost $7,000 in this bills list. Inglisino, Webster, almost $3,500. Another law firm, Bevan Mosca, nearly $6,000. I would like to have some, just some explanation what these various firms are doing for the township, without going into the specifics, because you probably can't discuss that.
I can answer one. Inglisino is our redevelopment council, and Post-Pollock is a labor attorney.
Labor, all right. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Bevan Mosca is, are actually our assistant town attorney.
All right, thank you, thank you for that explanation. We have just under three minutes left. Wanted to discuss one other matter tonight. As many in this township are aware, Mr. Melham, Mr. DePena are aware, four years ago, you filed defamation lawsuit against former Mayor Ray Kimball, Tom Brolleman, and me as well. Last Friday, Jersey Superior Court dismissed the lawsuit entirely, as far as my involvement is concerned. Now, the reason for the dismissal is because after four years of just protracted endless litigation and legally, legal maneuvering, your attorney, Ms. Hitman, failed to provide one shred of evidence supporting your contention that I had anything to do with those two disputed mailers. In fact, the only piece of evidence.
That's absolutely not true, but I'll let you speak, I'll speak if you're dumb.
But you want to see government perjury?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm going to speak if you're dumb.
All right. Just not, those shred of evidence, you had a single mail, subpoenaed a record from the mailing house, which, which was Tom Brolleman sending the letter, that list that I had supplied to him and Jim Candary.
Had what?
There was a list of, a list of all of the registered voters.
You supplied the mailing list, didn't you? And our subpoena showed that.
That's, no, no. What I supplied was over a month period, starting in March, on April 11th, I delivered a list of registered voters to Jim Candary and Tom Brolleman. They, two weeks later, Mr. Brolleman apparently took it upon himself, acting in, with other individuals, to send that list.
This is the most information we got in this lawsuit so far, keep talking.
Yeah, well, I would, I would love to, because I would work toward you.
You can have extra time.
If this ever went to court. That list was sent to them on good faith purposes. They asked me to find a distilled, generate a distilled list of registered voters. Instead of the 21,000, they had asked me to only include registered voters who had voted in the May 16 election or the November 2017 election. Had your attorney ever bothered to depost me, she would have had all this information, but getting to the truth of the matter wasn't her interest. You wanted just to drag this out, to slander me as much as you want, as you could possibly do over the four-year period, to cost me as much financially as possible to hurt me and my father as well in the process.
Do need you to begin wrapping up, sir.
Well, guess what? I'm about to turn the tables on you. You and Mr. DePena are now going to be the recipients of a multimillion-dollar lawsuit. I intend to bankrupt you to the fullest possible extent. But this is going to be the least of your worries. You, in very short order, all of you, in particular, Mr. Melham, are going to be the recipient of a criminal complaint.
You're out of time, thank you so much. Anybody else in public commenting?
Get a better attorney next time, Hitman's a joke.
This, Ms. Frank Antoni.
Hills, Frank Antoni, Mount Prospect Avenue. That tree is coming either pruned or down over on Franklin Avenue by Andrew Steele. I'm happy to see that it will be taken care of, but it was a two-year battle in getting the, getting it down. And Mr. Icono's office called me on Friday to tell me it will be taken care of, which I am happy to see. And as far as the facility up there at the rec house, where the bathroom is never open. I mean, I've been all over. And in fact, I was just at Mole Field at a football game. Their facilities are open to use the bathroom. I go to Cedar Grove, Roseland doesn't have an elaborate facility. Their bathrooms are open. Why was that ever built if nobody could ever use it? They don't have a person there taking care of it in these other facilities. Somebody goes in and cleans it the next day. I don't get it. It was money thrown away that it could have been used for other things. And I want to ask the town if they can do something, which I don't know, but we're looking to plant trees in different spots of the town. Do you think maybe public works, public workshops could be cleaned up somewhat or somewhere, and you could start growing your own trees? They're not hard to do. My father and my grandfather were gardeners, and they did this all for a living. If you grow them and take care of them, you don't have to go out and buy them. So, think about it.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting? I'll take a motion to close public hearings. We have a motion made in second to close public hearing, Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Coswell. Yes. DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Resolutions.
Pull five, six, and eight.
Pull five. Pull five, pull six.
And I just want to call eight, folks.
Eight. Anybody else? Entertaining motion to move the consent agenda? So moved. We have a motion made in, and not second.
Second it.
And second it. To move the consent agenda as a whole, Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Coswell.
Yes, and abstain from 1525.
May what?
1525 to go.
I'm a specific.
1525. Got it. DePena?[1697.14]